2023 at 6 o'clock PM. This is the Bluff Town Council meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Lou Anne Hook.
Brian Murray.
Ann Leppen.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
The first thing is approval of Bluff Town Council's special meeting minutes from April 14th, 2023. Has everyone received them? Have you read them? And are there any changes or modifications?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Approval of Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes from April 18th, 2023. Has everyone received them? Have you read them? And are there any changes or points of discussion?
Um, I, oh, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make sure Linda got the typo on Chris Wiltzy.
Right. I, um, changed that to the Chris going, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I, I had a comment at the end under other, and my reminder was actually, I thought, to the council, not to Mr. Gurney. And I see it, but I think it went unheeded, so it's moved.
So I changed that. So, so what I do when you give me, um, changes or corrections for our meeting, I put them on the draft agenda, or draft minutes that are on my, um, laptop. So I don't always send them out. So what I changed it to, um, oh, let's see. Well, Jim suggested a reminder to Glenn Gurney is what you're looking at, right?
Right.
So I did change that. That's not in this copy either, but I, I removed the reminder to Glenn and made it, um, we need to pursue this.
Yeah, well, it, uh, it went unheeded, so I'll just motion to approve the minutes, however they are there. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then last is approval of Bluff Town Council Strategic Planning Integration Minutes from April 27th, 2023. Has everybody received them, read them? And are there any changes or modifications?
Motion to approve.
And I, I would like to make a comment before we vote. For anybody who's listening who wants to hear the entire strategic planning, um, session, it's on Utah Public Notice website, and I'm assuming it's on ours as well. But because it was an all-day session and there were 15, 20 of us in the room, it's going to be very, um, convoluted. So there are three different tapings. I tried to put them on in the order in which they were taped, but it was too big to put all on one recording. And then the other thing is there's a lot of background noise and chatter. So I just wanted people to know that.
I think Pathway is going to supply us with a, a, a next product that sort of summarizes that, though, aren't they, are they not?
They are, yes.
Yeah, that'll be available. Thank you.
Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. When we public comment, there will be a three-minute time limit for each person who's going to comment. If you exceed that three-minute time limit without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. And so if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment, Lou, are you raising your hand?
I am. I just would like to make a public comment. I came through the website to join the meeting, and that's why I had to be wait, uh, waited to get let in. But if anybody is looking, it, it sends an error message, but if you refresh it, you can get right in and get to our website. So it's a glitch that we'll figure out. But anyway, anybody listening, it's still accessible if you just refresh.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who wants to make a, a public comment? Oh, wait a minute, see if anybody raises their hand or jumps on.
I do want.
Mr. Chmey.
Thank you. Last time I didn't have a chance to, to get on the, the public hearing regarding aviation. And I, so I went back and listened to the recording, and I was shocked, to be honest with you, um, when, um, I, I thought Mary Gillum was a friend, and, um, uh, I was shocked by the comments. And I actually ended up, I saw her yesterday taking pictures of the, of the wash, and I ended up visiting with her, and she apologized for the comments. But one thing that I want to stress, you know, people have every right to, um, uh, to their feelings about noise, aviation, any of those things. They don't have the right to their own facts, number one. Number two, uh, they, I would appreciate it if they put their comments in the context of aviation and not malign my character and my business practices. Regardless of what anybody says, I do everything above board. She didn't realize that the wrong information she got about UDOT, I do own that frontage. And I did get permission from the local UDOT office, except, you know, the chronic complainer that's been working with UDOT, um, I ended up buying that, that highway frontage, which is, which is fine. Uh, there, as far as the wash, I own both, both properties on both sides. I am not changing anything about that wash. I'm just moving dirt from one side of my property to the other. This whole project started back in January when I applied for a business license for a, a tour business, which includes helicopters. I do have a business license from the city. And then next I applied, I, I don't know, I sent an email to Planning and Zoning asking permission, just out of courtesy, because I knew I didn't need a permit to demolish or backfill a hole. But out of courtesy, I did. And, um, so in that same email, I said, um, I hired Jones and Mill so I can, so they can draw up the engineering plans, so I can submit for an LUC. I never claimed that I have a building permit. I was in the process of getting one, uh, and that's when the rug was pulled dry from under me. So I would really appreciate it if people just, uh, focus on the project and, uh, and not question my integrity or honesty or, uh, and I would appreciate it if the, if the mayor and the council, when people do that, uh, I would appreciate it if you just let them know that, uh, that's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? I am going to respond, um, to remind everyone that we do have a code of conduct, excuse me, and since we moved away from in-person meetings, I think that might be something that's well worth reminding everyone of, including the council. So we used to have it on the table and make people aware of it, and that no longer happens because no one else is in the room with me at the table. But I appreciate the reminder. Anyone wish to make a comment? Okay, if not, we will move to item number one. Update on strategic planning session on April 27th, 2023 with Pathways. I'm going to ask Erin to take this, since she's been the lead, um, on the strategic planning.
So on Thursday, we met with Pathway Associates. They had two facilitators and a graphic, um, recorder who came down and met with us from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The individuals who were invited to participate in that session had been part of the process throughout, you know, throughout the entire time. This is a project that we've been working on since last fall, and so this was really the culmination of a bunch of the surveys and interviews, as well as, you know, all the work that was, uh, taking place really in depth over the last two months, in which the initiative teams put together, uh, their proposals based on feedback, um, received during the full day session in January. And so what, um, what the next steps are, so the facilitators are going to take all of the deliverables that the initiative teams provided. So as a reminder, we have mindful growth, livability, and sustainable local government. They're going to compile all the information that they gathered that day, as well as the deliverables that those teams provided, and put it into a final written plan. And, um, the goal will be to have that finished, complete within a month. So we should be able to, should expect to have a, uh, final, final written plan available by the end of May slash early, probably early June, realistically with the federal holiday. Uh, any questions from the council about that process? I mean, y'all were there, so, but questions about the follow-up?
No, I didn't notice. I had asked Linda to make a change in the minutes to reflect that there was no voting, no decision-making. And we've got a pretty big, I don't.
Brad, you're, oh, there you go. Thank you.
I was gonna have a comment, but I'll just drop back. It was really good, and I'll stop right there. It was an excellent, excellent session.
I agree. Erin, you did a fabulous job. Thank you. That's a lot of work.
I did, um, add that, that to the end of, so I'm, so I, I guess I need to be sure that I'm sending out updated minutes at the very end. So I did add that comment, that all five council members were there, and there were no votes, there were no motions, so.
Thank you. All right, then, if there's no other questions, we'll move to number two. A reminder of the opportunity to sign on with the Committee for International Dark Sky Designation. Right now, we've only received, um, any type of letter of interest or email of interest from three people. We could really use a five-person committee for this. Not that there's going to be a great deal of work, I anticipate. Some of it will be given to the consulting firm, if we hire one, and then a lot of it is the groundwork about looking at what's in the community and taking measurements. But we could really use two more people. So if you're interested, please send a note or get ahold of Erin or myself, and, uh, next week we'll announce who's expressed interest, and we'll get moving on that, because we can have a public hearing on the application and move forward at that point. Any questions? Any thoughts? All right, then moving to number three. Report on Planning and Zoning Meeting of April 19th, 2023.
Okay, yeah, I attended that. Erin was also there, so she can add if there's anything, but, um, there weren't a lot of, uh, there, well, there were no LUCs, land use clearances. There were none on this meeting. Let's see. One of their items was the Utah League of Cities and Towns, uh, zoning changes and things that will affect us from the state, but that hadn't gotten uploaded yet, so there was no discussion on that topic. They were asked to, to host a, uh, hearing for the aviation zoning, and they were tossing around dates and sent it back, and I believe it became the 20th, I don't know, I won't say the date, because I'll mess it up. But anyway, it's in May. And then they spent the rest of the time working on the draft, um, RV ordinance that they've been working on just the last time or two, and so that's, uh, they were going through it line by line and, um, kind of nailing down what they thought might be a good idea for the town. And that was all that I had from this time.
I would just like to comment that when Planning and Zoning chose the date of the 23rd, so May 23rd for the public hearing, I have a conflict, and I need to be in Salt Lake City. And I sent out an email to folks and asked if anyone would be aggrieved if we moved it to the 22nd. No one replied that they wouldn't be available, so I set it for the 22nd. I appreciate the flexibility of everybody, but there was no way I could be in Salt Lake and leave from here on that same day. So thank you.
And so the, the 22nd is, is now Monday, and I think it's at 6 o'clock, isn't it?
6 o'clock PM, yes.
6 o'clock, May 22nd is the, the public hearing.
And we'll send out some reminders and be posting, but thank you all for being flexible.
And the zoning, the, just a follow-up on that, their discussion is it's not on any particular property. It's a zoning ordinance to cover the, the whole 37 acres is what, uh, they are considering.
Okay, any questions for Lou or Erin? Erin, do you have anything to add?
And I think I said 37 acres. It's the 37 miles.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually, with the disconnect, it was 36. We went from 37 to 36, but it's a huge section. Erin, did you have anything, or are you okay?
No, that's an accurate report. Thank you.
All right. Then number four is a discussion of the public hearing on aviation traffic within town boundaries. I was just going to make the announcement that I had moved the date from the 23rd to the 22nd. Again, that's a nice reiteration, Lou, that it's not about a specific property, it's that we have not, when we did the, the initial zoning maps, aviation was not in the plan, and the airport isn't zoned, um, specifically for that either. I believe that's a ag piece. And so we need to go back and take a look, and that, we'd like to move it along as quickly as possible. So folks who have thoughts about what they'd like to see, be sure that you attend or let us know. I want to add that anonymous comments, we're not going to be accepting those. And I realize some folks want to make statements, um, for or against zones, but we just, people have a right to know who's talking, and so I'm asking the town manager, if she receives an anonymous one, to tell the sender that unless they want to make it a part of our public comment, it's just going to not be considered by us. And if any of the council disagree with me at this point, you need to tell me right now, because that's my instructions to the manager. Okay. So we'll take it from there. Any thoughts? Or should I move on to the next number?
Next number.
All right. Uh, discussion of the letter from Schools Institutional Trust Plans Regarding Lease 85360. This is, let me just get to it here. This came in last week. It was dated the 20th. It's from Sitla, the School Institutional Trust, signed by Brian Torgerson, who's the Southeast Area Manager on surface, and it included a map. It's a special use lease, um, agreement. What it says is Bluff Dwellings Resort Expansion, and it has a circle around the area. I think this is posted on our website, and if it's not, we'll make sure that it is. Okay, Erin is nodding yes. So there's a period of time that we have to respond, and that was 15 days. This was dated April 20th. It's 15 days from the date of the letter. So I've talked with our attorney, and he prepared a draft, uh, letter, uh, with me, walking me through what we need to, to do to respond. And this is your opportunity to say if you want something different in here, but basically, it's just a simple response saying that the Town of Bluff has several water rights at that general location, which includes culinary water and the arsenic plant of BWW's Bluff Water Works. The second point is if the applicant, and this is open for anybody to bid on, so if the applicant, whoever that is, proposes commercial development, we want to be involved, and we want planning, we want our zoning ordinances considered and engaged. And then we would like to see, if it's developed, we would like to see some workforce housing included in the plan, because as we all know, housing is a premium. And if it is, um, a large expansion, there'll be additional workers, and it would be nice to have that as a consideration. And the last point was there's some existing other land that we'd like to have included in the, in the development piece in discussion, and that would be some agricultural land, and we'd like consideration for that. If this meets with everyone's approval, I'll sign it and send it out. If you want any changes, I won't be doing that until tomorrow, but tell me now if you know of any changes that you have.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is, uh, mostly a courtesy from Sitla. Is that correct? I mean, they can pretty much do, uh, what they wish. Is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct. Sitla, Sitla does not need to comply. They are, they have an exception to compliance with any zoning that we might do. And in the past, um, during these discussions, we've had some, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down on the suggestions we've made, but it's important to have that seat at the table to, to make our suggestions. But they can do whatever they want, it is a lease, so they could do whatever, uh, development, they could approve whatever development is going in there, and there's probably not a lot we could do about it. But that's why I wanted to be sure we responded, um, immediately to this, since the letter was like 10 days old by the time we got it.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Go ahead and respond. That letter sounds good to me.
Jim, did you have something else?
Uh, the lessee would have to comply with the, um, existing, uh, land use ordinances, though, correct?
Um, my understanding is that they do not. If, okay, so it depends on how it's set up. If it's a sale, and then it's developed, yes. My understanding, and again, I could be totally off on this, but if it's a lease, the lease could be structured in such a way that there's not compliance with our current zoning. And they have this exception for Sitla. That's why it would, I believe it would be done during the, the terms of the, the lease, not after the lease is signed, and the person buys it or does something and develops, I think.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. That's much clearer.
Well, no, it's really not much clearer, because I'm still struggling with understanding. The bottom line is, if we can work with Sitla and the developer, that would be great.
Yeah.
But that's, it may not even come to that. I mean, that's one option that Sitla has. They don't have to put it, um, they don't have to go out on a lease. They can just pull it and let it sit.
Right. Thank you.
I, I trust your judgment, and I trust the judgment of the attorney, but I believe I will abstain, since I haven't seen the actual letter. I hesitate to vote on this specific letter. I will vote to approve you writing to them, but, um, I hate to approve this specific
So.
Is that a motion?
No, well, I mean, if, if you want to do it that way.
Mine is a motion.
What is your motion, Brad?
Send that letter and send it to Lou, and let her look at it before you send it tonight.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any noes? And Lou, you're abstaining?
No, I'll go ahead and do it, if, if that's part of the, the motion, that you'll just send it to me, so I can get a shot at before you send her off.
Okay, and yeah, I'll hold it. I won't do anything with it tonight.
Thank you.
Yep. So stay tuned, it's a long process. All right, number six is discussion of tree trimming and weed mowing at all of our buildings. So the Cooperative Cultural Center, the Community Center in Barwell. And we always forget about Barwell, but Barwell is looking pretty ragged. Brad, did you have Gabe do some work on any of that mowing yet?
Yes, ma'am. Last week, um, I think West Park got mowed and the BCC got mowed. And, um, so there, which, I think we could say that we're trying to stay ahead of the weed control, um, but it's difficult this year. So I think, I think things are looking pretty good. We'll have to be active for a few more weeks, it looks like, you know, until the weeds die back some.
I think it would probably be a good idea if, um, some of this is coordinated with, uh, the Community Center Manager and the Town Manager, and then that we get some quotes on what this is costing, so that we're sure we're all in the same ballpark and we can approve the, the work. So can you do that for the future?
Um, are you asking me if I can do that for the future?
Yes.
I was trying to, I made to try to put those, um, Gabe in touch with Malia, so there's not a middleman. But yes, we'll, we'll, um, you know, how do you want to okay it through Erin and Malia?
I think.
Who says?
We'll, we'll get back with you on, on how to do this, but one of the problems that we've had in the past is one of us getting some work done, and then the bill being more than we really wanted to pay, or that we really thought the value of it was. And so this is probably a good time for Erin and myself to sit down and have a, a policy about some of the summer, these summer projects and the maintenance projects. But we'll get back.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So we have paid, the first project they did was the Community Center. The council agreed to pay 150 for what they did there. That's done. The second, every piece that they've done, which included the door to the, uh, to our offices, they've been paid for that. It was kind of a similar amount for the, similar amount of hours. So, um, so going forward, um, we've either been paying, um, a set amount for a project or for, or for hours.
And the, the door was truly an emergency. That was not only annoying, but you couldn't get in the door half of the time. Or at least I couldn't. Yes, Brad?
Well, one of the, one of the factors in trying to schedule this mowing is just availability of workforce. So there's going to be some days when, you know, we expected mowing, and there was no mowing, or that sort of thing. So, um, anyway, that's, that's just part of the, part of the operation.
And was there tree trimming done as well? Or is that still waiting to be done?
At the CCC?
I'm not sure. All I know is that I was told that there was tree trimming that needed to be done, and I can't.
I think Malia and I had a conversation about a, a large tree at the Community Center, and I referred her to, uh, Perkin, uh, Decker Perkins, who has done some, uh, tree work around town. If it's going to be high tree work, it's going to be, we'll need a tree person. Small load limbs is something we could kind of, you know, that Gabe and his group can
Okay. Sounds like we need a little coordination, but thank you.
Yeah, Decker Perkins is the guy. He, he's got the machinery, and he knows what he's doing. He'll do this. It'll, it'll just cost you a hundred bucks.
Like, basically, or works it the way he must have done, too. So he's a good friend of Bluff. Good guy.
All right, anything further on that? All right, number seven, the elections are coming up, and we had to post a notice, which has been done, on our website and on the Utah Public Notice website, telling folks when the election is and when the declaration, well, when the declaration period is. So the notice says that, according to the code, we have two Bluff Town Council seats open, that's, uh, Brad Murray and Jim Sayers. They will be voted on in the general election November 7th. The period for filing the declaration is June 1, 2023 through June 7, 2023. In the notice, I put that the Bluff Town Office will be open for filing from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM on the following weekdays, so June 1, June 2, June 5, June 6, and June 7. And I put the address down stating that the offices are located in the north, I hope I got the right corner, the northwest corner in the back of the building, because sometimes people don't know where that office is. I hope I got the right corner, the northwest corner in the back of the building, because sometimes people don't know where that office is. There are a lot of changes legislatively to how elections are run due to all the allegations the past four years of voter fraud. And I talked with Mac McDonald and Lyman Duncan about how the last election, the ballot box was in our office. It was supposed to be picked up the day before the election. People came in when they found out that the ballot box was still in the office. So we had some people vote the day of the election by putting their ballot in, but then the county picked up the ballot box in the afternoon. And some people thought they could still come in and vote, so it got very confusing. This year, we have the agreement that we will actually hold to the schedule that they give us. And now that it's on my radar, that it's not being adhered to because of the, it was explained to me the size of the county and the employees that can go out and actually pick these up. But they will be filming the drop off and pickup, which is different than we've ever had. They will be filming, counting the votes. They'll be doing everything electronic, you know, virtually so that people have a record of what's happening. And I'm hoping that that takes care of the problem of some confusion around where the ballot box is. I don't know yet when they're doing in-person voting for either the primary or the general. The primary election would be held if we have more than two people file for the seats. So if we have more than four people file, then we will have a primary. There's been some confusion early on in our incorporation as to what we were paying for the elections, and I'm still working on sorting out 2019, 2021 bills. But going forward, we shouldn't have a problem because there's a set fee schedule. The process is now in place. Mac McDonald understands the process and is able to actually follow it, and it'll be something we should be able to follow by looking at the bills. And that hasn't been easy for those other two elections to sort out why our bill was what it was. If we don't need a primary, then the names will go on the ballot for the general election. There are no write-ins for primaries. So if somebody out there thinks that they want to do a write-in, don't do it. It's not going to count. You wasted your vote. But in the general election, people who filed to be a write-in candidate don't have their names on the ballots, but they fill in the little box, the little bubble, and write the candidate's name in. And again, this is only for people who file timely to be a write-in candidate. So if you have any questions, counsel, let me know and we'll clarify them with the county or the Lieutenant Governor's Office. I also sent out, and you should have the inter-local agreement for the election. And before they send it to before I sign it and send it back, I'd like to know if anybody has any questions about it, and then I will send it to Mac, or to Chris McInnany to have him look at it and make sure there's nothing odd. One of the things I'd like to point out is that in this agreement, unlike earlier cases, we have some added responsibilities. And those responsibilities concern me because we're not trained in doing these. And so I want to talk with our attorney about how we arrange and conduct election canvas, prepare candidate certificates, and perform, quote, "all other election duties and responsibilities," end quote. So if you have a question about the agreement, now's the time to tell me so that I can run it by Chris McInnany. Okay. If something comes up, let me know because I'll try to talk to Chris about it this week so that it can be back on the agenda then for approval of my signing it. But I want to make sure I cover all of our questions in one call.
And I, I know you said it was in the Utah League of Cities and Towns, so I haven't had a chance to look that up. But I know we have had issues with having to be in person to declare candidacy. And you said something about you can have an agent now. I know they were working on that across the state. But I'm still curious in case somebody wants to run but is not physically in Bluff that week.
If that person, in that training, what they said is if that person who is not in Bluff when they're filing is sitting in their car and they're doing it? No, if they are not within the city, the town limits, they're not in town. If they're out of town for two minutes when they're trying to do this, they're not in town. They walk through in very great detail the agency piece of it. And I'm not going to try to explain it because I don't want to confuse anyone. But the bottom line is if you're not going to be in town during those days, you need to let me know or let Aaron know. And we'll get the answers to the questions. But it's very, it's, it's not easy. And I would recommend to anybody that if they thought they were going to try it, they better figure it out now rather than on June 1. There's also a change in, I shouldn't say change, there are additions to what somebody filing candidacy has to be told and signed off on. So there's a packet. Our town clerk put together the book for me for the election. I printed off all the materials. We put together, she put together the packets so that whoever is in the office and is deputized will hand that packet to the person declaring and walk them through it. So it's extremely detailed. We can deputize the town manager or the town clerk. It has been recommended by the Lieutenant Governor's Office in Utah League of Cities and Towns that it not be an elected official this time. They are changing that. They, well, I'm, I'm not going to say they're changing it. What they're recommending is it be the manager or a staff person to do it. And that has not been the case in the past. It also has to be, it's a bigger box, so it's going to have to go into office two. It will not fit into the town manager's office comfortably. And the county will let me know when they're bringing it down and then we'll put it in office two.
Mayor?
Yes.
When you talk about deputizing, I mean, it seems to me we just go ahead and deputize both unless it's a laborious process. Is it a period of time? Do we know about deputizing? Is it through the election? Anyway, they're just questions that will get answered later.
Okay. Well, for the purposes of the next step, it's deputizing for that time period of of declaration, which is the first through the 7th of June. Then.
Sounds good.
Any other questions on that? Okay, just let me know if anything comes up when you read that agreement so I can get it to Chris in one phone call. Number eight is discussion of the gravel, gravel pit tax money available to the town of Bluff. And this was a suggestion from our accountant, Dave Zanderson, who asked whether we had any gravel pits in town, and we do. And so Linda made the initial phone call. So Linda, do you want to explain what you found out about this tax money?
So Twill County has several gravel pits and the, their legislators have been trying for several years to get some kind of compensation because the, those, the gravel trucks are really hard on roads. And so this year, they finally came up with something that that passed the legislature. It is, so they will, or the state will collect sales tax from ready-mixed concrete manufacturers. And it's about seven, well, 7 million plus that they're going to be distributing. They distribute it in July, and it's based on the population of a town or city. And the town or city must have gravel pits. If they don't, they're not part of the equation. So it also must be used on roads. And I don't know if that means interior roads, highway roads. I wasn't able to get an answer on that yet. But in July, we will get some funds.
Thanks for checking on that. Good job.
Thank you. Anne, you're muted. So hopefully we'll have a little bit more information about that next week. And Linda, do we have to make an application or verify the gravel pits?
No, their property tax experts are doing all this work. And so we don't have to submit anything, which is helpful.
Yeah, that is really helpful. Great. Well, hopefully we can answer the question about whether it's Class C road or the highway or both that we can use the money for.
Is there somewhere we can check and make sure that they have the gravel pits in our area on their list?
I'm guessing we can run that by the resource people that are doing it. The other, the reason I was pausing is Lou, this might be, okay, so my gut level says it's probably on the highways and can't be used on the interior roads because that's the damage that's being done predominantly. But if it, if it is limited, this might be a source of a pool of money for the bridge and the active transportation plan.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought. It's.
And we have had a lot of gravel trucks going through.
Yeah, and that's, they, you know, we talked about that earlier, the commercial sharing of the road. It's not just residential sharing of, of the road that we need safety sidewalks for, and that, that might be a good match.
Well, let's get some more information on that then. All right, number nine. I really hate to do this to everybody in May and June, but we're slammed with things that are due and the budget is one of them. So I sent out to everybody the budget draft that Dave Zanderson, our accountant, worked on for 2024. He did an amended 2023 draft as well, but I didn't send that because I wanted to keep the focus of the discussion just of the 2024. There are a number of things that we don't have here in the budget factored in that he's not aware. He was looking at the 2022, 23, 24 projections. So Aaron and I will start working on this with Linda and with Dave. And then if you recall the process, we have to have a budget work session to get all of our input. Then we have a, then we present the, kind of the proposed budget. Then we have a public hearing for public input, and then we adopt the budget. And then the bottom line is the budget has to be adopted along with the certified tax rate by the 20th, I believe, of June. So it's a fast track at this point where we need to be doing the work. Aaron and I talked today, and Aaron, if you can just check me on this, because we picked some dates for potential dates. On May 17, what I'm proposing is that we do a work session from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. And the reason I'm proposing that is we need to do a joint work session with planning and zoning. And Aaron thought we should try to tie those together, so then do the joint work session with planning and zoning after that at 6 o'clock. So starting with May 17, does anyone have a conflict or an inability, and I'm sorry, the times aren't great and I get that, but it's the best that I can come up with with Aaron at this point. So can everybody do the 17th of May?
I can, but didn't we schedule a joint meeting with planning and zoning? The 10th? Or is that out now? That's out the window?
It's going, I think it's going to be out because you're trying to tie some of this together and, and eliminate having more meetings.
Fine. 17th is great. I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the public hearing, in order to get the seven-day notice to the newspaper and posted for the public hearing and then be able to work on any revisions and pass it during the month of June without calling a special meeting, we would need to have the public hearing on June 6. And that would be, I'd be there in person, but it would be the same way we're doing things now, virtual and in person. On the 6th, so people could actually show up at the public hearing if they wanted.
I'm in town then, mayor, so that works for me.
And if someone's going to be out of town, that's fine too. It's just a, you know, you can do it virtually. But in order to meet the deadlines for the budget, there's, we're just going to get jammed. And then the final budget will be voted on at the very latest on June 20th, along with the certified tax rate somewhere in that ballpark of June.
I'll be gone for that, but I can vote remote, so that's fine.
Aaron?
For the public hearing on June 6, was that 5:00 or 5:30?
5:30.
Was, I'm sorry, was that, so is that the 5th or the 6th?
The 6th.
6th.
6th. So if everyone is okay with that, I'll do a memo to all of us, just spelling out the dates that are important in May and June so that we've all got them in our head. Although if we all, if we all learn to use the calendar that Aaron has for us, that I'm still struggling, but I'm trying. Then what I, one of the things I'd like to talk about in the our work session in addition to the budget, and this will include the amended 2023 budget because we need to make some amendments. I'd like to talk about getting the uniform fee schedule in place. And Chris is kind of working on putting together an ordinance for that. And then I'd also like to have us look at applications for the vendors that we want to put on the website for the Eclipse. So it's kind of a mishmash of things. But if everybody looks at the, you know, the budget and the amended budget, so I'll get that out this week, his draft of the amended. But maybe we can kick through things pretty quickly and at least get a tentative budget before us. Any questions, thoughts?
Do we need any vote on any of these dates?
No.
Okay.
No, which, I'll just work with Aaron to make sure we've got them all nailed down and we know what we're, where we're going when. All right, if there's no other thoughts or questions on those items, then number 10, other?
I have another.
Jim?
I would like the council to, I respectfully ask the council to consider a liaison appointed by the council, a liaison with the Design Review Committee for the Cooperative Culture Center.
uh, Cooperative Culture Center. I may not be doing this, uh, obviously. Everybody has an endpoint. I hope mine isn't that soon, but I think it would be wise to consider, uh, something more institutional, something more official, if you will. Uh, don't really need a project director quite yet, but, uh, doesn't come up to that level. But I think the, uh, position of a liaison, I, I just want to add that I think it's, uh, critical right now, since we do hold the title for the building, that we retain the agenda and the minutes, uh, responsibilities, uh, that I've been carrying out. And I think that a liaison would be able to do that probably. Um, but anyway, if you would consider that and we can have it on, on the agenda for another time. If there are any questions, just hit me up.
I'm putting it, oh, go ahead, Lou.
No, no, it's a different subject. It's just another, other.
Okay. Go ahead with the other, other.
Uh, the other was, I think you should inform the folks of the good news at the airport.
Oh, thank you. So Sunday I drove out to the airport to take a look because we all have a question about the, uh, hangar kit that was out there. It is gone. So I am making an assumption that, uh, Mr. Gurney picked up his hangar. Um, if he didn't, congratulations to whoever did. I don't want to know who did it, if it wasn't Mr. Gurney. But there were truck tracks out there, heavy truck tracks. So I'm, and it was quite tidy. There's a little pile of scrap, but it's very manageable and just a truck, you know, small truck. So.
Well.
Mr. Gurney.
Mercy like a gentle rain falls. Thank you.
Good night.
All right.
I have two others.
Okay.
All right. The first of which, I received an email from Tammy Gallegos yesterday, um, a forward from the Bureau of Reclamation regarding some planned, um, channel maintenance releases from Navajo DM. And I can share this on the website as well. But I think the public should be aware that they are planning, um, a release at the end of May for at least 11 days. Um, it's saying like the last week in May through the third week in June. Um, clearly the town, you know, it is under, we are keeping a close eye on any potential flooding and things like that. Um, and Tammy has been great about providing very timely updates. Um, but I can share this information on the website, but there is a planned release. It says they, the release will ramp up slowly, peaking at 5,000 cubic feet per second for at least 11 days before ramping back down. This operation is expected to begin the last week in May. Um, and they are trying to time it to coincide with the peak on the Animus River. So, um, just want to let you know that they are sharing that information, which is, which is good. Any questions about that before my second other?
I, I just have one comment. Um, in getting these emails from Tammy Gallegos and from the governor's office, we, we have sandbag, the physical bags, we have those. And those are at the Bluff Fire Department, I understand. And then we're making arrangements to get a load of sand to, um, the fire station at the request of a couple of the, uh, Bluff Volunteer Fire Department. And I see that Jim Hook is on, did you have something to add on this, Jim?
Yeah, just some, some history. The, the combined flow will likely between, be between 10 and 11,000 CFS by the time it gets to Bluff with the Animus River and the others up above. That won't threaten the town at all, but it will put water up on, uh, a lot of the trail and down at the end of our driveway where the sculptures and stuff are, there'll be a foot or two of water. The only place that I've ever seen the high water from the river cause problems is out near the Atity camp. Um, there's a big sharp curve there and I visited that in the county. We had a, a TracO out there, a bulldozer ready to put some stuff in. The water went down before it was beginning to threaten some of their houses. But the, the town itself, you won't go, you won't want to go play in the river, I'll tell you, but it'll be fun to watch.
Well, and that's a good point about the Atity camp. Mac McDonald, when I was on the call with him about elections, said that the county has reached out to the Atity camp to let them know that if they look like they're experiencing any trouble to let them know. And I asked Mac to keep us posted if there's anything we can do to help as well. But I'm sure the, the fire department, the more experienced people with this know what to look for better than I'm going to know. So thank you. Erin, did you have something else?
Yes. My second other this evening, um, I wanted to share that Anne was nominated for the Utah American Society for Public Administration Distinguished Service Award for an Elected Official. Um, so that is a public, uh, organization and she was their recipient of this award this year. So, um, we sincerely appreciate her service. And I know it's an awful lot of work to incorporate a town with all of you wonderful folks, um, who've worked so hard. But I did want to share that, um, that it, you know, out of everyone. So there are four nominee categories. Um, and so she received, uh, the award for the distinguished service award for an elected official. So congratulations, Anne.
Thank you. And thank you for the nomination. It's a team effort. You know, we, we all kicked it in this last five years and the two years before. So thank you, team, and thank you for the nomination. And that's why I have to be in Salt Lake City. If I, I could skip it, but I have to say I've never had an award. So, um, it's kind of a nice way to do a swan song, right? I leave right after that. Very much. It's, we've all worked really hard. So.
Congratulations. What an honor. It's a pleasure working with you.
Well, it's, it's been a ride, hasn't it, guys? It's a lot of work, but we've done it. Anything other? All right. It's 6:57.
Motion to adjourn. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?